And did you accept bids to have the memorial repaired or only to move? We did receive bids to have it repaired as it is, but these bids are all old and outdated. If we were to repair the park as it is, we would have to rebid that process. We don't have any costing numbers for what it's going to be if we move the park. So, those are the community members' questions. I hope that gives us a little bit of a context and answers a couple of questions. One more thing I want to do before we start in discussion. Brian, is Bob coming this morning? Okay. Doctor's morning. Can you please read or summarize your information for the one hundred point two dash one?
Yes ma'am. From last council, of course, we were going to interpret or try to put our interpretation on the statute. So, I guess first of all, of course, this one hundred dash two point one, more or less B that we're looking at. Is this a object of remembrance? And is it on public property? We're going to say yes, it is object of remembrance and it's on public property. And what triggers the statute is one or two things or both, when appropriate measures are required by the state or a political subdivision to preserve the object. Or when necessary for construction renovation or reconfiguration, et cetera. Those two things trigger the statute. And the alternatives there, you have two options. You can relocate the object temporarily. And if you do that, then you're required to bring that object back to the same place. Ninety days after the renovations or construction have been completed. And those renovations or construction that were caused for the relocation in the first place. Or you can relocate it permanently. If you relocate it permanently, then you have to put it in a place of similar prominence. Similar visibility, walkability and availability. Those are your two options. Now, the other, the other thing is if it's determined by, you know, we'll say a building inspector or somebody of the like or an engineer, that the property creates a public safety hazard, then it can be removed. And those are your options. That's, that's what we, we determine.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Brian. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I, I know, you know, in your video you put on Facebook, you had, you asked everybody to email. And you gave all our email addresses. And since you read the ones that you had got, I also received one and it just says, Dear Mr. Young, could you please ask the mayor and the council where the grant money is that Ms. Dickey said she could get? And more importantly, why did she discourage someone from forming a fundraising committee? That's the one I got.
Would you like me to answer? Would you like me to answer?
Yeah.
Okay. It's the grant that we have that's going to expire on June thirtieth. We have the grant funds. We've got four hundred and eighty-three, right Megan? Okay, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars projected renovation cost for Sesquicentennial Park. At the location that it currently is, is around four hundred. And so we've got enough grant funds plus some to fix it at its current location. Those are the ones that I was referring to.
Okay, so the, the grants that you have been talking about since before you were elected. Duke Energy and Impact Alamance. That's, I think that's what it's referring to as well.
Well, yeah, we also have opportunities to do Duke Alamance. We were talking about an AARP grant with Aaron last week. There is Impact Alamance. But there are also four hun- over four hundred thousand dollars in grant funds that we can use and that will go away if we don't use them.
Okay. I'm, the last, last meeting, Tuesday's meeting. Prior to that meeting, I had asked staff to check with the contractors that had placed the bids on repairing the park where it's at. To see if they would honor those bids. Before the meeting Tuesday, I was told they would not. And so what that did was we would have to send out requests for bids. By the time, and this is by law, am I right Erin? By law, we have to have a timeframe.
It's ten days out, is that right?
As far as for
For bids.
The send out requests.
So it, it depends on the path you take for the bidding. The path that we're looking at is no less than, I, I think it's somewhere around the twenty-ish days that you would have to do for the type of bids that we were going to have to do for this project. And it's because we're needing to be able to have a speedier backend of how we're doing the bidding. So it's a longer stretch of advertisement. So that you are able to do the backend a little quicker.
And the concern was by the, if, if all that had to happen, the grant money will have expired by then. So that money could not be used towards this even if we wanted it to. And I, I think you are, are kind of misleading people and not letting them know that. That that is a possibility, that it, that we can't use those funds for that because of that timeframe for the quotes.
I agree. The more that we sit up here and talk about it and
I would appreciate if you
To the last
Put that out as well.
We need to discuss ASAP and we would be better suited if we could vote in this meeting to go ahead and start the process to allocate these four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to fixing the Sesquicentennial Park at this current location right now today. Because every week that goes by, absolutely Jim's right, it gets harder and harder to finish this project in the timeframe that we're given.
And I, I do believe that the last bids we got were four hundred and seventy-nine thousand and some change to, to to fix it and put it back where it is. That bid is only going to go up from there. So I, I would anticipate it, since it's been expired for months. I, I would anticipate it's going to go up quite a bit from that. And again, that's just a, a wag because they don't know what's going to happen when they start digging. You've got a wall that's sitting on top of the ground. Because when the Patterson Building fell back in nineteen seventy-eight, it, it took part of that outer wall with it from the other business next to it. So what had happened was they had a inner brick wall that was exposed to the weather. So they had to build a outer brick wall and they just sat it right on top of the, the ground. Basically, there is no, it's not shored up at all. And, and I will point out too that, you know, back when this park was originally conceived and built, you know, they had no, they didn't, they didn't know how much money it was going to cost. They didn't know how much money they were going to have. It was all done by a committee. And the city of Graham agreed to build it or to have it built there, to allow it to be built there with no engineer drawings, no nothing, no bids, no nothing. So just wanted to point that out that, you know, it's not that unusual to be in a position where you, you go forward on something without an engineering drawing, so.
These are the bids that came back last time to repair the park. So we do have one that is four hundred and seventy thousand, but we also have one that's three seventy-nine thousand.
Yeah, but that, well, okay. You aren't here, but those came in, but I will tell you, yeah.
When those bids were submitted, the soil contamination had not been identified. So that was not factored into their bid.
So I have a question to counsel. We can go down this path and we can keep talking about this. But this is not what Ricky and Bonnie had called the meeting for. And so if you guys want to go here and say, we're going to keep Sesquicentennial Park, let's, let's go and do this conversation.
Well, given what we have learned from, from our attorney, the conditions that we have to meet is one of first condition that you mentioned about locate and it's satisfying the conditions of visibility and of compared to where it is now. We have a location that I think satisfies that can, you know, what has been considered or should be considered is instead of behind the museum, the park will be located on West Elm Street with the entrance from West Elm Street next to the Coffee Depot. And if you're downtown, if you're at Court Square, at the courthouse, you can see the park. You would see the park from there. So it's around the block, it's around the corner. And would that meet the conditions, Brian?
Yeah, I guess that's, you know, it's hard for me to say because that's kind of in my mind. It's going to be different for mayor, for everybody. But I think that if you're asking me, if I think it is, it is of prominent, it needs to be of similar prominence. So West Elm Street's a busy street. It's, it's, it's walkable, it has access to it, it's visible. It, it seems to meet, you know, again, this is, this is my opinion and this is up to a trier fact probably. But you know, I would think that it would probably fall under that criteria of, of similar, not exact, but of similar prominence. I mean, it's not that far from where it is right now. It is accessible, it's going to be visible. But I, I, everybody's going to have a different opinion, obviously, especially on a topic like this.
So in our last month's meeting, we did vote to move the park. And we did vote to go out for RFQs, which is what we're here to, to talk about today. So do you have those RFQs that you, you're going to put them up here, right?
Guys, for anybody, they'll be up here, but they're on my Facebook page too, if y'all want to flip through them.
Yeah, so, so basically the RFQs, we received two different RFQs. One from Stewart Inc. And the other one was from Concord Engineering and Surveying Inc., CSI. Staff reviewed both firms, that being our public works director, our city engineer and myself. And based on the credentials that both firms presented, as well as timeline and past experience, Stewart was the, the firm that we felt would be able to provide the product that we were looking to have done. So that's the recommendation that staff is presenting. If this is the will of council to move forward, relocate the park, would be to use Stewart to do that.
Aaron, Mayor, would you pull up Stewart's proposal, their RFQ?
Give me one second.
While he's doing that, the I, I want to restate my, my opinion that the community has spoken, that we have the funds to keep the park as it is. So that is my opinion. And also with Stewart's RFQ, I, I have a lot of problems. We're looking at a schedule that's too tight. Aaron sent a proposed timeline and just said that we need twenty days to put stuff out for bid. And this is only allowing a ten day. The project manager is out of Charlotte. We need to do new utilities. They're saying construction starts week three with no bid, like there, there's so much going on here. And I don't want us to push through a project that does not have community engagement, that does not have any buy-in from the community. I'm not sure how we're looking to fund this park. If we're looking to fund it out of taxpayer dollars, like he said, it's, the funds are expiring. Then we just passed a huge Graham Regional Park Master Plan that I would love to throw those funds into. So I have a lot of questions.
Those funds that we're talking about could not be used for the Graham Regional Park, had to be downtown.
Right. But Jim is also saying that we could not use it to fix Graham Re- or the Sesquicentennial where it is because he's saying that they're going to expire too soon. And that project is significantly smaller than this project. Because this one includes a design phase.
Well.
Can you bring up that picture that, that shows the entrance on West Elm?
A concept drawing they propose.
Now, now, point of, point of clarification, we would have to do bids either way. So it's not that one way you would have bids, you would have to rebid regardless for the current locations. I, I don't want anyone to think that, that part of the process doesn't
Right. This also, there's a lot of handicap prime spaces that are taken away. There's a lot of parking spaces that are taken away. And our, the county has not said that we can use any of their parking spaces. And it's my understanding, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, the you're going to get so tired of me. All that up. The Graham Prez parking lot that we can utilize during the week, does that have a end date on that agreement? It's my understanding that that doesn't have a end date and can be taken away at their leader.
Well, I think any agreement that a city has, has an end date.
Can you pull it up for me? It's my understanding that it does not have an end date. So the, the downtown parking impact to this one?
I, I think, I think all agreements that we have has end dates. It's just, I had to look up the agreement to see what that term is. So if you give me one second, I can find that one.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. With or without that parking, it still takes away a ton of other parking. We don't have county parking locked in. And the businesses on this block don't want that space there. They need their parking so that they have customer base.
Man.
Sure.
Aaron, after speaking with Brian Baker about the parking issue, then he clarified that we could use the additional parking at the register deeds.
So the, the parking, if I could see it on here, and I apologize, I'm trying to run to at one time here, but um, so you have the, you have the assigned parking that's right there at the register deeds, which speaking of the county, that area is going to be tough for them to be able to allow for the public to use in addition to it being reserved parking for their employees. But the, the larger lot that's right there in front of the entrance into the register deeds is currently public parking already. So they were saying that if the city needs to use that, you know, you know, in a way to promote parking for that space, I'm sorry, that the city could, because it's already public parking already. But the assigned ones, the ones that have marked numbers, those are the ones that he was saying that the county would be able to allow to be shared parking.
Thank you.
I just want to show that what Stewart prepared as a concept for the park is in stark contrast to the park proposed by Councilman Hall, where basically would be a, a brick, a, a park that was all brick and such versus here is a concept where it's got green space. The pergola would be there, it's prom- it's open. So.
And if we want the if you think the community is going to be excited about this, then let's open it up and hear from the community and have a community impact, uh, input process. But I, I don't want to
We have
I know, that's, that's the whole point, is I don't want to push through a project that we don't know that the community is about.
Well, what has been proposed by the community is, you know, is to inject foam into the ground below the current park. And Bert, would you share with, with those here? That that foam has a shelf life? That we solve a, a problem temporarily, but it's not a
Uh, there is foam injection and there's also grout injection, which grout is basically a cement, which is a permanent, a permanent repair. But either process far as grout injection is pretty expensive. The grout injection side, the last we used it was in twenty fifteen on a project, it was two hundred and fifty-three dollars a cubic foot. So how many cubic foot do we need to fill the voids we don't know about? I can't even begin to give you a price what that would cost, because there's just too many unknowns.
Oh goodness.
But it's, it's basically running as a
Uh, the parking agreement is expired as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, so it's running as a month a month right now.
Right.
Okay. So you were right, it did have an end date.
Yeah. I don't think it's legal for us to have a agreement that doesn't have a
An end date? Okay. So we'll put that on the to-do list.
Yeah.
All right.
So with, with Mayor Dickey's objections noted, again, we did vote last month to move forward with moving the park. That's why we did the RFQs and what we're here for today.
Clarification, December meeting, but yes.
Right. So, so it's been what, two months, okay? So we did vote to move forward. So that's what we're here for today, is to look at these RFQs and determine if we want to pick one of them or not. And we keep getting sidetracked. So we need to get back on track and let's talk about the RFQs. So does from the two that I looked at, the Stewart one appealed to me more because they, I, and I don't see the drawing up here that I saw before. Where they, they didn't use the whole parking lot, you know, the parking lot's like an L shape. If you're coming in off of West Elm, uh, they were only using a portion of it. Yeah, right here where it went into by the coffee place, so it went.
These are just the project examples that they've done.
Because it didn't use the whole parking lot. It only used a portion of it. It didn't use that, that area in the back behind like the museum and all that stuff. Can you find that one, Aaron? Please. A little more definition, a little more detail.
So I want to point out that our original RFQ, the call for qualifications, had a date of July fourth to have the park construction completed by. These are the two that we got that said that they could meet this deadline. The firm, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but the firm that just did our master plan did not submit because they said that they couldn't do it in that same timeline. So there's, there's other firms that we really enjoy working with that are saying this timeline is not feasible.
Well, maybe it's not feasible to them because they have other projects going that they can't get to it as quickly.
Maybe, but I've had other industry professionals look at this timeline and it, it's, they said it was not feasible. So I'm not relying on, like I know small construction, I don't know park construction, they said that this timeline's not feasible.
Okay. And we have some that say it is, so.
But the service being, what we're contracting for, again, is engineering services for relocating and then bidding on getting bids to do the work.
Yeah, I, I think the, the first thing that has to be done, we, we had to get a firm to draw up an actual conceptual engineering plan so that the bid can be derived from that. So what we have here, you know, we had two firms that basically said that based off of the guide that was used, that Mayor Pro Temp, um, Harold provided. Okay, you're looking to relocate into this general area. This is what can be done based off of, you know, site surveying and and, and review of the location, utilities, all that stuff that you have to take into consideration. So there, there is that first part that they're needing to do in order for us to even get out for bid. So we can't even go out and do any bidding yet until we actually have the drawing from them in order to, you know, basically know who or what is needed going forward.
And so that's what we're voting on.
Correct. So this is, this is like the true, even though the RFQs were done, to me, this is more of your first steps to actually doing it, is to get a firm on board so they can do the, the drawing for us.
Right. And we voted that we want to move the park to the location originally behind the museum.
Yeah, so I mean, taking into consideration the, I mean, all of that is the city parking lot.
Right.
There were parts of even what Mayor Pro Temp had provided that sort of bled into the side lot over here as well. But Stewart, for example, looked at it from a okay, we can make this work, but there's an alternative that you should consider where you're more or less looking into this space over here because you're able to get the elements more readily done in this space based on their review. So now we, we really do have to have someone who is going to come out, look at it and pen the paper, draw it out, and then we actually have the engineered drawings of what's actually going to be able to go there, that's going to fit in there, that's not going to have conflicts with other elements that, that you want within the park. So without, without having someone come out and doing it, you, you don't have the true plans until you get that done.
Right.
Aaron, what's the square footage proposed versus the square footage of our existing Sesquicentennial Park?
I want to say this area here is about five thousand square feet. Um, I think the other location was three thousand and change.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay. It's like three thousand, so it's at least fifty percent bigger for this space here. Obviously, this space here is, is much larger, which would require you know, a little more review, but this space here, because it's a tighter space, you're able to sort of fit it into a I don't want to say cohesive plan, but you're able to, to definitely not have to worry about spreading stuff further out, it's, it's just more compact.
So what we will be voting on is picking a firm and then giving them the conditions of what we want them to design to. For example, this space that is accessible from West Elm Street.
Right, so I, from staff perspective, if this is what council is going to do, we would just need for y'all to give us the green light to meet with the firm. And then based on the, I guess, the guidelines, or so, so to speak, the conceptual to a point that Mayor Pro Temp provided, this is what they can do in this space. And then we would bring that back to council.
Okay.
Now, more than likely, we have to be a special meeting because if, if it's too far off, you know, we're, we're obviously all working on the tight timeline, as Mayor Dickey pointed out, so we don't really want to carry it on to a, a regular meeting if it's not one that's coming up
Right.
In a few days.
Let me ask a question that I think a lot of the community members might be wondering. Is if y'all want to move forward with this, are they still okay to put their committee together and sell bricks and have something put back on our and sell bricks and have something put back on our current site of Sesquicentennial Park? Because that's what the community left Tuesday excited for. Um, and I think that was what's already been set in motions up, did you raise your hand? No.
If we move the park, we are not going to fix its current location.
But you challenged the community on Tuesday night to raise the funds so that they could fix it. I'm asking, can they raise the funds to fix it at their current location? Because I, I don't think the community is interested in this, they're interested at the current location.
Well, why is that?
What's, what's the? We heard a lot of people say that last Tuesday.
Well, I think the question of, at, at the last meeting was, on Tuesday, was it legal for us to move it? So I think there were other options discussed with raising money, whatever, because we weren't sure if we could move it or not, but now we know we can, so. And we had already made that decision and.
Hold on, guys, I got it. I think you said that we keep getting sidetracked, and I think we keep getting sidetracked because we're trying to put a square peg into a round hole, because the community and the funding and, and everything is lined up to keep the park where it is. And I, I don't see a lot of other people wanting to move the park. And a lot of people are asking how we're going to fund something this big.
Well, we have $480,000.
And we've heard that it's 600 to 800,000.
Heard, we don't know that yet.
That's what.
Just like we don't know how much it will cost to repair the park where it is, we don't know either. And we're under a time constraint, we, we've already voted on it, and we need to move forward and pick a contractor so that we can give our city staff some direction on this. And we need to just get on with business.
Hold on, guys.
My, my concern is, yeah, I'm, I'm the one that wanted to reaffirm the motion that was made in May to, uh, tear the pergola down, tear is not really a great word, but to, to remove the pergola and put the memorial bricks in safe storage and make the area safe. And then the other part of what I said was to allow the community time to get together and raise funds to get the park back the way that it was originally done. Um, I'm not, I'm not going to sugarcoat or use any touchy feely words. I think, I feel like we're kind of doing this a bit too fast. And I know we want, we, we've got that timeline and we want to hit that July 4th, and I can appreciate that, and I think, um, I think Ricky has a, has a, a great plan, but I just think that we need to give the public time to come up with some funds, if, if, you know, give them the opportunity. And I, I just can't, I can't vote for, for this right now, not without, after what I said at the last meeting, to allow them to have the opportunity to raise the money. But I, I do want, want the folks to understand the grant money will probably have expired by the time the park, if we put it back where it's supposed to go. No matter what the, the mayor implies, it, we're, you're probably not going to have that, those funds to use for that. Um, it's, that's just the truth. But I still think that we should allow the public time to raise, raise some funds, and hey, Madam Mayor, you'll have time to get those grants you were talking about. Um, that's just, that's just my opinion, and, uh, I'm, I'm sticking to my guns on this one. I know I'm going to make some people mad, and, you know, so far, I'm doing that every meeting, so. That's, that's just my two cents.
Thank you for your two cents, Jim. Yeah, I think, I think slowing the process down and, and actually talking to the business owners, doing more of a parking assessment, um, and letting the community get involved would be very beneficial.
Well, also, I did speak to the commissioners last night, and, uh, I believe the, uh, chairperson of the commissioners, um, told the city manager to get in touch so we can set up a time for us to discuss that. So, you know, who knows, the county might come up with some money too. You know, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to see if they want to finally put some funds towards their Sesquicentennial celebration. So, you know, we, you don't know, but I felt like I had to go, even though, you know, it probably wouldn't get anywhere, but somebody had to, and, um, I think it went pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
That's it.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, I will point out too, that we've been having this discussion for some time. It's been going on, I, I think we've had probably upwards of 10, 10 times we've had it on the agenda without a peep, um, until now that we're under the gun, now people show up and say, no, 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 no. So.
Hold on, guys, hold on.
Yeah, control your.
I think we all know that that.
This is not a public area.
I understand that, I'm not letting them.
We've been discussing this for a long time, is my point. Then we finally made a decision, and, and now everybody, you know, here, these people here want us to put the brakes on it. And, and I will also point out that at the last meeting, you know, we, we had an outflow area of 30 people, right? And come to find out, uh, most of those were Elon students getting class credit to sit out there during our meeting.
That is the first time hearing of that.
I, I'm sure it is.
I, I also want to point out that you said all they want you to put the brake on it, but Jim and I also were saying pump the brakes.
Well, well.
And.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not in agreeance with it.
Okay.
And we've already voted on it, so.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we award contractor Stewart to proceed to consider if we, to relocate the park to the property off of, uh, West Elm, as shown in the slide here.
I want to confirm that this is right after you've challenged the community to raise funds. Correct? Uh, okay, all right, do I have a second?
From second.
You said it wasn't separate.
They want to raise funds.
They can raise funds for this.
This park or that?
Hold on, guys.
If they don't want to, if you don't want to raise funds, if we.
But they're not allowed to raise funds for the current location of Sesquicentennial Park. I, I'm asking, because you challenged them to do that last week.
They can, but I mean, we're going to move forward with this.
And they're not allowed to rebuild at the current location.
We're not going to fix it.
If we, the city, if, if we move the park.
I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, if we move the park, then the city, we will not then improve the park, the old location.
Even with charity funds?
Because.
It will be moved.
And they would have to, you would have to raise the funds to fix the site.
And we're not going to fix the site. That's the whole point, it's too much of a liability.
Hold on, guys, hold on. I'm trying.
No, you're not. Um, it's too much of a liability, um, for the city to start digging next to a historical building. It's just the, the amount, amount of money that it could end up costing us could be tremendous.
Bobby, can you reiterate if they're allowed to raise funds and then remake your motion, please? I don't want to get sidetracked, I just want a clarification.
My motion is to hire Stewart to review and provide.
Engineered drawings.
Engineering drawings to relocate the park from its current location to West Elm Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Passes 3-2. The public is not, I, I, I need to hear this from you, is, is or is not allowed to raise funds to fix the park at its current location?
That's their choice, they can raise funds.
It's going to be moved.
But if we move.
So I don't see a point.
Hold on, guys. Bobby, I just want an answer. Are they allowed, will you permit them to build it back as a council? Because it's city land, we have to say if it's okay for them to build it back.
No, we intend to sell the land.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, I, that, hold on, guys. That is the entirety of what was on our agenda for today. I want to say that, um, it's disappointing because I think that the community does want to, to keep it, but this is the vote of council, it passed 3-2. Reach out to your council members, work as a community, and we'll, we'll, we'll try to make special meetings in the future, in the afternoon, night time, time, so you guys don't have to take off work to come and, and be with us. Thank you for being here, do I have a motion? Do you need anything else from us?
Mayor Dickey, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
The motion that was reaffirmed last week at the council meeting to essentially make the existing park safe, I know there were other, uh, conditions that kind of go along with that. With the action taken today, for staff, it would just be helpful to have clarification on, yes, that is still our path while Stewart is working on the drawings, or no. We don't want to expend staff resources if, if we don't need to be using them in that regard. So if it's possible, just to get a little clarification on that, it would be helpful for us.
Sure.
Well, I don't think that we, we should use city staff to disassemble it at this point because if it's going to be included in the bids, you know, to move it, to pick it up and move it, we need to let them do it, so, but that's just my opinion.
Is it included in the bid?
Well, it's not been bid.
It's not been bid, so it's not?
No.
No, it was this one, okay?
No.
Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, and the other point of clarification, is that consensus of city council, so, just so we're clear, I would like to not have.
Feel about it, do you want, you want to go ahead and have the city staff remove it? Or, or do we want to wait and let?
I'm holding out.
Up bidding, remove.
That we can still use the grant to take it down and build it back up. So I, I'm okay leaving it for right now. Are y'all okay leaving it for right now? Ricky?
What do y'all think?
The, the motion from Tuesday was to reaffirm the decision in May to take the park down, put the bricks, everything in safe storage, and make the area safe. Um, I'm assuming that when that motion was made, they were planning on using staff to do it. Um, so that was the motion that I wanted reaffirmed. And Madam Mayor, you keep harping on the grant money, that you, you, you need to throw that little disclaimer in there that it's possible we can't use it.
It is, and it becomes more possible we can't use it the further we kick.
You're not informing, you're not informing people, all you're doing, you're inflaming them and you're making them mad when you need to give them both sides.
Thank you, I will. If, if we don't get this vote passed very quickly, hold on, the, the grant funds will go away, and they will go back to the state, and we will not use them. Hold on, I, we will have to talk about that later, there's no public comments during this. Mr. Boney, I'm sorry, this is not, this is not a public comment time, I'm sorry. We'll talk right after we adjourn.
So what, oh, Councilman Hall, what do you think about, should we go ahead and remove it?
Uh, let's stop there. But we don't have to pay the extra fees to have the crane, the cranes back in there and let it, as I can go around.
Because, yeah.
As Mr. Burke, Mr. Burke has talked about that several times.
You have a consensus?
Okay, and then one other point of clarification, with the contract being awarded to Stewart, is the proposed funding mechanism, the downtown revitalization grant funding? Because if so, we have to go through the process with OSBM to change our scope of work, to get that approved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Megan, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you.
We need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.